Hello? Of all things, I don't know.
All right, everyone's getting started. It's a little after eleven. Sorry for. Commissioners, can y'all see this? Can you see my screen? Hear my audio? Everything coming across?
I can hear you. I'm just not sure if I'm being heard.
Okay, yes, I can hear you. Is it Tina?
Oh, yes, yes, sir. I can't see the video, though.
Kevin, can you see the screen?
I can see the screen and I can hear you.
Okay, good. All right. All right, guys, let's get started. Going to open with opening prayer. Commissioner Bird is going to provide the opening prayer for this afternoon.
Can y'all hear me?
We can, loud and clear.
All right, let's bow for prayer. Heavenly Father, I praise you for your grace and mercy. And Lord, I just thank you for the opportunity that you give us to serve our community. And I just pray for wisdom, Father, tonight, as we make decisions that impact the future of our city. Lord, I just lift up our mayor and our state leaders and our president as they have to make difficult decisions during these trying times. And Lord, I just pray that everything we'll do will bring honor and glory to your name. In the name of Jesus, I pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Commissioner Bird. Appreciate that. All right, if you would, join me in the pledge. Flag is right to the back of the room. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Level. All right, thanks, guys. Let's go ahead and do roll call. Open up our July Plan Commission.
Carlisle.
Here.
Ervin.
Ward.
He may hop on.
Yeah.
Here.
Ryder.
Ryder? I don't see him on the sign in. Okay.
Mowdy.
Ervin.
All right, looks like it. All right, we got one, two, three, four, five, including me. All right, I get to vote tonight. Woo-hoo! Watch out. All right. Go to the next item on the agenda here. Come on, get a little faster. Let's go ahead and get the acceptance of our June Planning Commission meeting minutes. If I don't have any corrections or changes from anyone, I'd like to get a motion to approve those.
Make a motion.
Motion from Carlisle. Do I have a second?
A second.
Roll call vote, please.
Carlisle.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Mowdy.
Young.
Yes. All right. Okay.
Dead.
Let's go ahead and get our Board of Adjustment meeting minutes approved. If there's not any changes, I'd recommend a motion to approve those minutes.
Make a motion to approve.
Liz, do I have a second?
Second.
Carlisle, a roll call, please.
Carlisle.
Yes.
Sir.
Yes.
Mowdy.
Mowdy.
Yes.
Young.
Yes. All right, let's go ahead and get into the Board of Adjustment meeting. We'll do our roll call for that as well, so.
Carlisle.
Here.
Bird.
Here.
Ward. Ryder. Mowdy.
Yes.
Young.
Here. Chuck, are you almost on here? I'll check in and see if you're back on in a little bit. All right, first item for our Board of Adjustment. Hey, there you are. Chuck.
Yeah, okay.
Now, we just got through the minutes. We're about to start here. We're at number four, new business. All right, Kevin?
Yes, good evening. Y'all could see this.
And Kevin, while you're about to talk here, if everyone else could put their microphones on mute and when you have something to say, we'll unmute you, but they'll help out. Thanks, guys.
Okay, good evening, folks. This is 2049 Palisade Drive. The applicants are Robert and Claire Ray. The current use of the property is a single-family detached residence in an R1 zone. The proposed use is the same. This is a variance to allow a 10-by-20 accessory structure, a shed, to be located within five feet of the rear property line in lieu of the required 10 feet. This is a violation case, so the shed was placed there without proper permits. There's some details in your packet, in your report, with respect to the property. You'll note on some areas, you'll see a large above-ground pool that is no longer in existence. Some of the photos that were taken, not only by staff during their field inspection, but also submitted to us by the applicant, shows that and also shows a lot of the rear yard improvements. There is, there's an existing accessory building on the north, we'll say. The parts is kind of oriented a little differently, but it's the northwest corner, if you're looking at it from the street. So there's an existing accessory structure that's not necessarily the subject for the variance. So the variance really has to do with the newer one, which isn't shown in the aerial imagery, but is shown in the field photos that you can see. And in the applicant's request, they note that the gate that is also along that side, on the right side, as Palisades turns the corner, there's a gate, a 10-foot-wide gate. The applicant wants to utilize that gate to go in and out from the side yard with some recreational, obviously, there's a boat staged there in the rear. And so the impetus for the variance is so that they don't need to push that new structure anywhere forward. The applicant contends if they were to move the structure and keep it 10 feet, then it would obstruct their ability to go in and out of the gate as it sits today. So that was the main justification as to why there's a five-foot setback in lieu of the required 10. Your staff report makes some comments with respect to the existing regulations. I won't go into all of the before comments based on the tech review, but there are several applicable sections under the UDC 511 for variances. You can read those for yourself. I do provide a bit of some staff narrative in italics type beneath items one, two, and three. We can discuss those, but if the commission would like to have me elaborate on those, that's fine. Otherwise, I'll open it up for discussion.
Kevin, in your opening comments, you mentioned in the aerial view, the structure that shone the red shed in the back is that is there. That's the subject of the photographs.
It's, it's kind of hard to see. There's a Google Earth Pro image on that lower half of that page. Right, but, but you can tell, there is, there is, you can kind of tell that it's, it's really difficult to tell, but it is there today, and the field photo is verified. It's a little hard to tell in the aerial. But there are two accessory structures. The 10-by-20 or the one on the far right corner closer to Palisades is the subject structure that's under the violation, and that's what has triggered the request for variance.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
Apologize for the confusion.
Is the commissioners having questions for Kevin? All right, is the applicant with us either on Zoom or here in the audience?
I'm here, sir. I'm Jim.
Jim, what's your full name and address?
Robert Ray, 2409 Palisade Drive, Cabot.
Okay. So, Robert, can you give us a little bit of history, what's going on here?
That shed was put in there when I still had that 36-foot pool. That's why it was situated where it was, as far back as it could go to get away, so I could get through there with the pool and also still utilize that gate for my trailers and my lawnmower trailer and my boat. If I moved that new shed any further forward, I would have to relocate that gate all the way to the front of my property because you can see those four trees right there on the north side of my property are all spaced out to where you could get a truck in between there because they're grown up now because I bought this house in 2007. So to move that fence, the gate, is almost impossible to move it any further up because I would be into the side of my house with the gate and therefore would not be able to get my truck in between the trees because they're grown up now. So that's why the sheds pushed back as far as I could. I could still get my rotting lawnmower behind it. It's being taken care of all around it. And like I say, I took pictures to show you. I barely can squeeze my boat through there now to get by the shed from where it sits. There was less room when we had the pool, but we decided because of our age to get rid of the pool and the need of that shed because I wanted a workshop to do my woodworking in. But that's as far back as he could put it and still be, like I said, get my trailers and stuff through there. Otherwise, that gate would be useless. And I have to park my boat and my car trailer and my lawnmower trailer on the side yard. And I didn't want to make my neighborhood look like a trailer park because I got all this stuff parked down on my side yard. And that's it.
There are other points for information. Commissioners, do you have any questions for the applicant? Is there anyone else here to speak for this item? Is there anyone here to speak against this item? All right. Commissioners, you have have open discussion now?
Question for Kevin real quick, if he'll entertain. But I noticed one of the subjects mentioned something about being a detriment to public safety. How does this being placed on a utility right-of-way slash drainage area, how could that cause problems in the future?
Well, again, I'm not sure if it was just platted that way at the time it was platted because that was a requirement of the UDC or if it was just standard practice to actually plant it because it functions as a drainage easement. I'm not familiar with the property. In general, if you assume that the drainage and utility easement behind the property functions that way, you don't want to impede it because you want to have access. If the city requires that those things remain clear, it's because they ultimately have to get to it if there becomes a drainage issue. Now, I don't know that if there is any out there, but it's just a safeguard for the future or the present, depending on the drainage situations that are there. Some are more pronounced than others, but they always have a platted minimum five feet on center either side of that fence. That's the way the code is read right now.
So, do you know if there are existing utilities under that easement?
There's nothing back there, sir. All my utilities are in the front yard.
I don't know if there's actual drainage pipe within that easement. Joe, do you know if there is or not? I think he's on the call as well. I mean, irregardless whether there is or is not a structure according to our regulations cannot be built within an easement, a platted easement.
Right.
Now, right now, easements are blanket. They don't differentiate between drainage or other ones. Right now, we're actually having a conversation about that today, but not related to this case necessarily. But so right now, five feet on center would be a 10-foot wide. But that's not necessarily, you know, with respect to structures. The easements and the rules for how big they have to be are independent, and they don't assume that any structures are going to be on them. So there's already a 10-foot setback. And that will usually keep from structural encroachment.
Kevin, the violations include being five feet away in a 10-foot easement, which means it shouldn't be shifted to one side. And what else?
Right now, what I know, and Laura, you can qualify this, is that this is a violation based on a structural rear yard setback encroachment for the accessory structure. It's five feet, and it needs to be five feet further into the lot at 10 feet. Is that correct, Laura?
Yes, accessory buildings have to be 10 feet off the rear property line.
Okay, so that's, that's the reason we're here. It's because there's an encroachment from an accessory building in the R1 zone for lots of the size.
Okay.
Correct.
I'm not sure what else we can do, other than if the commission doesn't have any questions, let's go ahead and call for a vote.
Ask a question. What is the, how long has the building been in this, in this spot?
Nine months.
Have there been any complaints from many neighbors?
There have been zero complaints. Everybody's come over because that's my wood shop. And it's like, wow, that is a very nice wood shop you have there. And then one day, somebody knocked on my door and started this, and I didn't realize it was a problem. I thought I was doing the right thing by not parking all my stuff on the outside. And then, like I said, that's where it had to be in order for me to have it and be able to utilize my woodworking equipment, which is what's in it. So I haven't had one single complaint from any neighbor whatsoever. That sign was in my yard for two weeks. Not one person came by here and asked me what it was. None of my neighbors, which I know all my neighbors, because I've lived here since 2007, have said one thing about what is that for? Not one person.
Are the trees on the side, are the trees on the side, are, you said they were grown up? Are they on your property, though? They are, they are your trees, yes?
Yeah, that north side outside of the fence is all my property. I've got about another 30 foot before my fence until I get to the street.
Mr. Robert, is that accessory building a modular building that that you said?
It was built off-site to my specifications, then they brought it in.
Is it on a slab or does it have a wood?
It's a wood, wood floor, and then I just put those bricks around the outside of it to make it look nice in our backyard and to make sure that the water flowed through there when it rains because that is where the water drains back to by that fence. And I didn't want to have something stopping it, so I put the bricks there so it would flow through there and not underneath the shed. And it flows out just fine.
Chad, if I may, I think part of the reason this came about to our office is that I know Mr. Ray said it's been there for, for quite a few months is, you know, we either had, you know, a neighbor call and say that they've noticed an accessory building and wanted to know if a permit was pulled on it or we had one of our code enforcement or inspector going by and noticed that there was a new accessory building and we did not have a permit on it.
It was Marty.
Noticed, we had contacted Mr. Ray and let him know that he needed to apply for a permit on it. And here comes today where we have come to discover that it is not located according to accessory building code standards.
All right.
Chad, I'll make a motion.
Got a motion from Mr. Carlisle. Do I have a second?
Jordan, what's your motion for?
For the variance.
A motion to approve?
Yes.
I second the motion to approve the variance.
Carlisle.
No.
Mowdy.
No.
Ryder.
No.
Mowdy.
Yes.
Young.
Motion, variance is not approved. Do you not have a majority? Three noes, two yeses. So we'll need to talk about how to remedy that accessory building. All right. Mr. Robert, if you want to get together with Laura.
Okay.
Where we go. Thank you, sir. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Have a great day.
Next item, item B.
We have a next to Brown Rockwood on direct request to allow for a 511 to exceed maximum height of 30 feet.
Okay, good evening, folks, again. This is 2818 South Rockwood Drive. This is in regards to the Kiko's Country RV. This was a site plan that was approved back in November of 2018 for an RV retail and sales operation. Kiko's, I'm sure you're aware, they have several locations in the region. The property is just, just above half an acre. Lotwood and South Rockwood addition. As you can see on your screen, this is a clip of the approved site plan. In your report, I made a point to mention the annotations or the notes that you can see, sort of handwritten. Those were placed by the applicant for this to mitigate. Those annotations were not on the site plan when it was approved. And it's cut off, but that lower left-hand side of the graphic you see on the screen, you can kind of see, well, it's not really cut off, I'm sorry, it's this proposed sign. So that's the location that I used in some of the graphics in your staff report with some of the aerial imagery. And you made a pretty good attempt at using that location with respect to some Google Street View shots just to give a little bit of some perspective as to where that sign would be. Those street views are not to scale, and I would assume based on some of those images that the 50-foot top of the sign as they're proposing would go up and beyond the view of some of those, those graphics. The applicant can opine on that if they'd like to. But they, what they're needing or what they're asking for is a pile-on sign of 50 feet in height in lieu of the required 35 feet. So in the C3 zone for this use, you're not allowed to have any signage that goes above 35 feet. So they want to go up an additional 15 feet or 50 feet total to the top of that sign. So that's the proposal before you. The rationale that the applicant gives in their application is that there are some power poles. You can see them. I am presuming that the power pole on the left side of the roadway, as you're looking at it down in your graphic, just beyond that for sale sign is, is one of the power poles in question. And so they'd like to get above that, I'm presuming, so that it doesn't block a view of their signage that they'd like to use to, to help advertise for the, for the commercial operation. So some of the items that I have included in your report, like the last report, were applicable subsections of the, of the UDC 511. So I make a point to call out two of them. I do provide some narrative. I'm asking that the planning commission determine if power poles or poles themselves are unique to the property for which the variance is sought and are not applicable generally to other properties. So that's how I would interpret the first check down, if you will, or criteria. And then the second criteria, particular physical surroundings. Perhaps the planning commission should determine if the power lines or poles serve as part of the property's physical surroundings, sort of unique in that way. And because the applicant's looking at power poles, you know, are, are those extensions of the physical surrounding or are power poles not extensions of your physical surroundings? So I know that sounds a little wonky, but that, that is how I would view the UDC 511 for variances in this vein. I'll let the planning commission discuss, and I'll offer any assistance as needed.
Thank you, Kevin. Is the client here? Mr. Lemmons, I'm gonna let him speak. Talking into the microphone, see if everybody can hear you.
Can you hear me?
Can the commissioners hear him? Talk louder.
He's getting closer.
Use your outside voice.
Can you hear me?
Louder.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can y'all hear him? Okay.
Something I want to point out, yes, the power poles are in fact a factor because that is one of the main transmission lines heading to the substation that's down the road. But something that is really a factor is the vegetation that exists there on 167 and Highway 5. Orange trees are quite immense. They're very large. And unfortunately, they are owned by the Federal Highway Administration. So it's something we can't do anything about. So therefore, those trees are mature, and we feel like the 50-foot sign will make this visible above those trees. So people that are taking the Highway 5 exit will be able to find this location. So the power poles are a factor, yes, but equally important is the fact that these trees that we have no control over. I have with me Mr. Charlie Garrett, who is the contractor on the job site, and if you have any questions, we'd be glad to answer them.
Commissioners, hear that?
Yes.
Good. All right, anyone here to speak against this item? Seeing none. We'll go back into discussion here with the commission. So I don't know if you guys can see what I did I sketch about where we're talking about the sign going? Is that about the approximate location? You see the red outline?
Based, based on my superimposing of the site plan on, on a G I. Based, based on my superimposing of the site plan on, on a GIS map, that's kind of how I placed my little red line in the staff report. Tim, if you'd like to qualify the staff report image, that lower half of the second page with what Mr. Excuse me, Planning Commission Chair has graphically shown, so I'd like to get a little sense of that.
I'm skitching over, yeah. Yeah, so.
That, that looks to be pretty, pretty close. Maybe a little closer to the.
Yeah, it's, it's probably further back from the street, but. Yeah, what I wanted the commissioners to kind of visualize is that. You know, the street width there, that's probably about twenty-five feet, tilt that up and add a, you know, another ten feet or so, that's about where the sign. I think it's about the scale of the sign versus a fifty-foot, which is an orange, which is the tall, getting it above the power lines.
I would say yes, that you are very close as far as the pictorial representation that you have, I would say you're very close.
One thing I wanted to mention on this item was thirty-five feet to me seems probably better in line with cars. I mean, it's kind of the mindset behind monument signs, get it closer in view of what people see. You get too far up there and it just, you know, gets kind of lost. From a designer, I'd say the thirty-five foot is ideal because it gets it in the line of sight for cars, better than the fifty-foot.
I understand, but I'd like to also kind of keep in mind that it's, it's pretty much Taco Bell, Walmart. There are several signs at the neck that are fifty, some of those I think are taller than that. We didn't want to get excessive, we thought fifty feet would be happy to us best one way. But we're trying to get people's, you know, this location, we got one sixty-seven and the trees that are in the median. Between, that are on the federal highway administration, which we have no control over, we can't go there and train the trees now. Therefore, we have to get it out there.
Yeah, so you won't be able to be seen from sixty-seven, from this standpoint.
Going south, I think you will not. Going north, the overpass is going to block you. Coming south on one sixty-seven, I believe.
Are y'all able to hear that?
I'll have to put the mic down my throat if I get any closer.
He has to put the microphone pretty much in his mouth for us to hear him.
Okay, is that better?
Yes.
Okay. Again, it's, the power poles are an issue, but. Except they don't have trees, they just have a tall sign, they don't have a real reason.
Yeah, thanks, Tim. Kevin, is there, we talked about an overlay district where we looked at taller signs. Is this outside of that area along sixty-seven?
It is. This is not within the highway sign district. It is close. Now you'll remember, the reason, the, the way that that was delineated was, was based off of the center line for anything that was identified as a highway. Which is sixty-seven or six, or one sixty-seven, or they're ramps. It's not necessarily that it's close because of sixty-seven, one sixty-seven, right? Because that's still significantly, you know, far away. But the fact that that off-ramp, not too far from this, further up into the right or to the, to the west. The fact that it's designated as a ramp is the only reason why the highway sign district gets as close as it does to this property. Does that make sense? So it's not like our overlay district is close because it's close to the center line of the highway per se. It's close because of the way we, I mapped it, right? It, it, it's close to the ramp, it's close to the ramp. But it's not in it, but it's not in it.
Alright, any?
Bring something up on that. The ramp that we're talking about, it literally teases into the front of our properties.
The outer limit of that three hundred-foot buffer literally is on the opposite side of the roadway. So if you look at where that power pole is on the right and that, I guess that, that. You know, standing building off to the right in your graphic, the outer edge of that three hundred-foot buffer around the highway is to the right. But it doesn't include this property. And we had to draw the stark lines because there had to be some way to define out the gate. What the city wanted to use to start regulating for sign height.
Right.
And remember, that threshold is eighty feet. So it's rather, rather high, and we did that because there was lots of commercial nodes that were immediately next to the highway where you had to have visibility. With or without trees, and we were okay with that.
This is just a question, but it seems to me like we, even if it goes to fifty feet, I, I'm just having trouble knowing coming up. North or south, it doesn't seem like you're going to see this sign from the interstate at fifty feet. I mean, am I wrong in thinking that? I don't think you're, you're, if you're coming from the north, I don't know how you would ever even see it before the exit at all.
You're not going to clear the trees unless you're a hundred feet up.
Yeah, you would need to go significantly higher. I, I would tend to agree. I did some Google Street View at the going southbound as one, you know, gets off. And at, at split, at that decision point, you actually have to go. I'm not sure that fifty feet would do it because of how, it does taper down quite a bit and the grade not only changes, but then you have to add in the height of trees.
Currently over the overpass, they will be able to see it, and most of the cars, I mean, there will be one over, one overpass.
It's perpendicular.
There's good visibility from the overpass, but I, I think again, definitely you can see this.
It is perpendicular for that overpass. I mean, this road goes this way, overpass is coming this way.
Yes, I mean, when you go over the overpass, you should be able to see the sign of the trees. If you want to grant us a hundred foot, that's something we would consider, we were trying to say.
Yeah, I could go either way, Commissioner, so you guys.
Mr. Chairman, could I, could I add to this?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I think there's a plan for that intersection going, that overpass being expanded quite a bit. And I think this is going to be a major intersection similar to Main Street in the future. And I, I think this sign is going to be minimal compared to what's at Main Street right now. I think we need to look at the future and, and think about this. I don't see fifty feet as a problem at all. He's not going to see it from all that tree, the trees over there right now. But it could be a player down the road when they expand that intersection.
Keep in mind, there's unannac, there's, there's unincorporated county land right, you know, on the other side of this parcel. Now, I'm not sure what the city's plan is in their planning area, if they ever want, if property owners are going to want to annex, you could start to see. The precedent effect of you having an ordinance with a pile-on sign, criteria and a max height. And then once the, once the precedent is set, of course, in the neighboring property and then going on up. Would continue to want to go beyond that thirty-five feet. So just, just keep that in mind. If you want to do some long-range planning and you want to think about what you want that collector road, and it's a collector, it's not an arterial. You know, it's not a principal arterial or a minor arterial, it's just a collector. How you want that collector to function, how you want it to look.
And Kevin, just to play the devil's advocate here, I feel like we've kind of already set that precedent with a couple of projects in the past. I mean, this is literally the same road, I think, that we did this on, what was it, Chad, a year or two ago, I believe? I mean, I, I get that it's outside of that proposed overlay that, that we had talked about prior to, but. In my opinion, it falls, it falls kind of within that. I mean, I, I get y'all's concerns on not being able to probably see it from the freeway, but. Doesn't seem like too long of an issue.
I, I agree. Is that a motion, Jordan?
Motion for chalk, for approval.
Motion for approval from Carlisle, do I have a second?
Second, Pryor.
Second from Pryor, roll call please.
Carlisle?
Yes.
Burr?
Yes.
Pryor?
Yes.
Mowdy?
Young?
Yes. Variance is approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, we're going to go ahead and adjourn the board of adjustment meeting. And we're going to go back into our planning commission meeting. It is seven forty-one. We're going to open up our public hearing now. First item of business is a special use permit.
Four thirty, West Locust, special use permit to allow more in-home daycare.
And Kevin, if you would, start us off, please, sir.
Yes, sir. So the property address is four three zero West Locust. It involves a, a, a single parcel ID. There's an existing single-family residence at this site. It's been operating in in-home daycare for quite some time out of that structure. Right now, the applicant is seeking approval from the state health department. For a, I would say, an intensification of their existing permit to be a full-fledged daycare center. Now, the state, and I'm not with the state, but my understanding, and Laura, you can qualify this, my understanding is that the state. Will authorize this applicant to have up to, I think it is, what is it, fifteen or sixteen, Laura?
Fifteen. And just to clarify, there is, she's not operating the daycare currently yet.
Right, okay. So right now, the state is basically saying, we'll allow you to have a license of up to fifteen children. But it's predicated on what the local special use permit looks at. And so you're, the, the long and the short of your technical report from staff. Is just to make you all aware that, yes, there's a state process. But they won't award the license until it goes through the special use permit process at the local level. Because the way they examine whether a property will or won't get a certain number of children. Isn't dependent upon the local impact, right? The state's criteria is way different than, than the locals. So that's why the local government has their special use permit process. It deals with the traffic, it deals with the surrounding property, it deals with zoning. So, yes, there, there is a, a potential for up to fifteen children. But then your report goes on to just qualify that by saying, you don't have to look at it assuming there's fifteen. In fact, the report recommends that you not look at it with fifteen, in large part because staff had some comments and some questions about internal circulation, parking. There may or may not ever be fifteen people dropping their children off all at the same time, all in separate cars. However, your impact has to look at it as a worst-case scenario and then perhaps tailor it back based on the site's constraints. So I can go through some of the aspects of the staff report with you, but I, I entertain some discussion from the commission.
Laura, is it fifteen or sixteen? I thought sixteen was the number.
Yeah, sixteen is the number.
Keep my phone out, I'm so sorry. It is sixteen.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, my concern is if Kevin's saying we have to look at it a worst-case scenario, which I agree. If, if this applicant request is requesting a maximum occupancy of sixteen children. Then we have to assume at some point, there's going to be sixteen children in that, in that building. So from what I can see from the drawings, there is no way with the current driveway that. E- even if there's fifty percent of the children being picked up at one particular time, and I'm just saying fifteen, fifty percent. Even eight children being picked up at one particular time, there's not enough room. Not only that, that we have an order, and I don't know if this will fall into it because it is a special use permit. I remember back when we had an issue with a, a residence and Mr. Lemmons was on that. Where they were housing women who were battered. And they had to require a parking spot. We required them to have a parking spot for every bedroom in that residence. Plus a handicap parking. There's five rooms in, in that, this particular building that's been restructured. So my concern is the traffic and the safety of those children when they're being let off and picked up. Because it's so close and there's, there's not enough area on, in that driveway for that number of children in that facility.
Those are good questions, Commissioner Berg, appreciate that. Let's, let's talk to the applicant, see what, what she has to say. Is that Ms. Tina?
Yes, yes. I'm sorry, upon, upon writing the letter, I was approved for up to sixteen. I generally am licensed for nine, and that's pretty much what I will be doing here. I have approval from the health department for up to nine. I can alter my kitchen and a few other things, he said, and be licensed for more. At this time, I'm just requesting for the nine, which is what I would qualify now through all. Branches of assistance for daycare. I do have parking for up to six. And I chose this home because of the location. I am on the corner of Galloway and West Locust Street. And all my neighbors are multiple housing and low-income housing. So I know as far as, you know, people pulling in, pulling out, it wouldn't, it wouldn't in any way. You know, harm, be in harm's way to anybody because I'm not in a, a quote, sub, sub-divized neighborhood. But I do not, I do not plan on going over the nine, it's just that they said I do have room for up to sixteen.
Tina, are you, are you living in this residence currently?
Yes, sir.
How many square feet are in it?
I have seventeen hundred and six quarter feet. I was hoping, I was going to come in in person, but I was hoping actually it would work on video, so I was going to walk y'all through because it's really set up nicely and it's completely remodeled. It's been completely washed down, sanitized, there's a kids cafe and I have a separate room just for sleeping. And I have separate rooms, I have two playrooms. And then I also have a large area that is a, is a TV room. I have done this for over twenty years. When I first started out, there was no such thing as even being registered. And then I've been registered and then I've also worked in a large facility where I had fifteen on my own. I do, my son is eighteen, so he's also here and my sister is also moving to the area, so. But, like I said, I've always, I've always run nine is, is what I've ran. But I bought this house and it had more square footage, so she put that I was able to have to up to sixteen. But I agree with you, I think I should keep it to the limit of nine. And I do, like I said, I do have a, a driveway of six and most times. My kids do not get dropped off at the same time, and a lot of times, most of my children are siblings. So I would have one parent dropping off two, to, to three children. This, in my experience, that's, that's what I have always encountered. But I do have a, a very nice home. It's been, like I said, it's been completely remodeled. It's, it's got plenty of space for, for the amount that I'm licensing for, that I, that I am currently licensed for and have been in the past. and have been in the past. When I, when I purchased the home, I was under the impression that when I got the business license, I would be able to run it according to Arkansas State law and DHS with, like I always have, because my other centers were outside the city limits. I was unsure, you know, what my guidelines were, but before I saw in the papers that I actually was told I would be able to, but then I I found out I had to require the special use permit. So that's why I'm here today, asking you for for me to be able to continue what I love to do, which is also my business. This is has been how I support my family for the last twenty years. I've got a lot of money, classes, time involved, and I believe I have the, a very good location, and I can offer this area a lot with my small group at, offering at a lower cost daycare also.
Ms. Tina, what ages are, is your business operating with?
It's two and up generally, but I do allow one under the age of two. But I I never take in more than than one under the age of two.
And the drop-off, you mentioned six. Looking at the site plan here, I'm not sure how you get six in that that driveway. Are you thinking that it's too wide and?
Actually, it's four cars, four cars wide, and then there's a side that curves off and in the carport. We actually parked six cars in my driveway. They were smaller cars, not, you know, extremely large vehicles, but
but if you park six cars in that driveway, there's one behind the other. So, if someone's dropping off someone, they have to wait till the other person leaves.
Right, and I do have a limit for drop-offs. I don't allow parents to come in and just spend, you know, ten, fifteen, twenty minutes. It is a limit on drop-off, especially now with the with the coronavirus, too. It's with masks at the door and, you know, say goodbye. It it makes it easier on the kids, too, that we're not doing the long goodbyes. And like I said, most of my kids, most of the time, I will have siblings. I usually have, you know, two, at least two groups of siblings, and generally, I'll have some that come earlier and some that will come later in the morning. I don't, I don't think I've ever had every, everybody ever pull in at the same time, and I've been doing this a long time. And like I said, at almost all times, I've always had at least two sets of of my group of nine have been siblings.
Got a question for Laura. On the site plan, would it would it function better to have some type of circle drive or some way to ease drop-off, kind of in and out, just thinking of keeping traffic flowing the same way? But maybe with a low number, I mean, nine, it's, like you said, it staggered the drop-offs, and you wouldn't have that issue.
Right. I mean, I think it would benefit to have the circle drive to for to lessen the parents to have to back onto Locust Street versus being able to potentially pull through and pull out on Galloway Street.
Is that an option to put a, basically connect that existing driveway?
Well, on the, on the left side of my driveway, I do have, like, it's a half circle to where you can pull in and back up to pull back out.
But Ms. Tina, if you, if you have multiple cars in your driveway, you wouldn't be able to have a car pull in and back into that spot to be able to pull, to back, you know, to then access onto West Locust. But if you extended that driveway where you have that backup point onto Galloway Street, or like as Chad is drawing, to have a circle drive on West Locust, I think that would be more safer for the parents dropping children off versus backing their vehicles onto West Locust.
Yeah, I'm looking now, like where the sign was placed in the yard. I mean, there could be a concrete added kind of there.
Chad, I come up with around sixty-six to seventy feet from where that existing apron is at Locust, curving up, and then to the left to connect Galloway. So that's, I mean, that's literally, you know, yeah.
Yeah, on Galloway, there's a ditch there, though, on the side of the property. So we wouldn't be able to do that. It's a covert and a and a ditch there. It, like I said, it does have that extra part of the driveway that, it's an extremely large driveway. Like I said, I have two children now at this time, and they're and they're sisters. And I had, I have one that's lined up for for maybe August, and that's a sister and a brother. Odds of, odds of more than a couple cars pulling in the driveway exactly at six-thirty is is very, very rare that that happens. And if it does, they can, you know, there's a way I could actually even talk with the parents to make sure we're dropping off at the right time and and giving enough room for them to pull in and use that access driveway to back out. It's not that I can arrange it with them, and like I said, there is a very limited drop-off time, especially now with DHS, our rules are with with masks and parents stay at the door. It's a a limited drop-off, and they're required to drop off and and go.
How many, do you know how many acres you have?
Um, I was looking for that when I, when I put the plot. I know that it 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 does exceed the square footage that's required.
It's about point three-five.
Okay.
About point two-five.
Okay.
And it is a double drive with a with a with a curve. I mean, it's pretty, pretty big. I I love the house for the, for the fact that it was set up to where it would be more functional, and it wouldn't, wouldn't in any way, you know, change anybody's else's, you know, ability to get in and out with with the drive that I have.
I do get about a hundred feet, Chad, if that circle, let's just say you were going up Locust Street, and you turn into a circle drive, and then you exit where that existing apron is. You get about a hundred feet, and at an eleven-foot, I think we use standard parking spaces are about eleven feet, give or take, and just, you know, of course, removing some space from bumper to bumper. You're around eight-point-nine, so if you round down conservatively, you could get seven for sure into a loading queue, and certainly six at a hundred-foot circle.
Yeah, I think it'd be safer for your patrons, for your families dropping off, depending, you know, potentially grow your business, probably to help have that circle drive.
Mr. Chairman, is there a possibility that we can table this particular issue until she has an opportunity to do a new site plan drawing utilizing the the traffic flow and some of the other issues that are cited in our tech review that, at this point, I'm not real comfortable with making a decision today until we can actually get some statistics on how this is gonna be operated, as far as days of week, hours, loading, unloading. There's some issues about lighting and things like that that's in the tech review that I feel like we need to look at before we make a decision on this.
I'm certainly open to that, Liz, if other commissioners are or two, is that, you on a timetable?
My Lord.
Whether, whether it's better to have a circle drive, or whether that it's better to have parking spots, and what the specifics of those parking spots might be, or the, you know, the lengths of the driveways, the issue with the covert, I mean, with the ditch and having a covert going on to Galloway. Those, I think all these issues need to be addressed before this is decided on.
Mr. Chairman, one other issue I'd like to ask about is, or maybe ask Ms. Tina, are any of these kids coming from Northside Elementary School?
Um, I have not taken in all my my group. At this time, I've been waiting on making sure I have approval from everybody. You know, that that would be part of what I would be offering is that just after-school program for with the nine that I will be taking in, but.
Go ahead. I I guess in that case, I I I'm a little bit concerned about no sidewalks around there, too. And there there's one across the street, it looks like, but there's nothing in front of your, your place at a crosswalk there at that intersection, and a little bit concerned about that.
Does our code require, you know, when the change of use happens to any sidewalk or upgrades?
I don't believe it's tied to a used occupancy permit, Laura. Do you know if the, your permit?
A special use permit's a totally different animal, so it, that would not fall under changing the use of an occupancy or anything like that.
The Planning Commission has the latitude to stipulate that if they saw it, because you are intensifying, you're basically, a special use permit's like a mini overlay district where you're intensifying the use without rezoning. So you can stipulate what you feel is suitable for the site.
Yeah, and and of course, we wanna be sympathetic to the business owners and, I mean, not try to make people buy a bunch of concrete.
Right. I mean, I do really have a, a large, a large driveway. I mean, it's, it's, it is a lot of parking here, and and I would have it arranged where I don't have everybody dropping off at the same time. I mean, that is something I do have control over, and like I said, it is a very limited drop-off time, and I do have the space in the driveway that has an extra curb to pull in and back out. It's alr-, that's already, that's already there. Now, I don't know, adding gravel to this, to, to the other side would work, and as far as after-school, that would be parents dropping off. I don't, that would be if they drop, if they drop them off.
Yeah, no, no gravel. We've, we've had that one come through, so it has to be permanent, concrete or asphalt.
Right.
Commissioner Bird, what other items are, so, you know, the item we're voting on here is a special use permit for this to change from its current use to a daycare, knowing that they're gonna go down to a nine, nine kids is what the optimum size is, which seems appropriate for the scale of house and seventeen hundred square feet. The citations that were written up in the tech review about lighting and culverts and that sort of thing. What specifically do we need to have more information on?
Specifically, she says that she can control the dropping off and picking up of the number of children that she has. So that wouldn't be an issue if she, if she was specific, which staggering the children the days of the week, which I'm assuming that's gonna be a five-day-a-week unless she has kids on weekends. It, are she, is she gonna have children after hours in the winter or whatever when it's dark? Do we need to require lighting if the kids are playing out back, or or those kind of issues? Lighting for for the driveway if it is after dark. I know it does get dark, you know, by five o'clock during the, during the fall and winter times. Are these kids gonna be picked up after dark? That sort of thing. I don't see any kind of lighting at all on this, on this drawing or on this picture of this house and around the driveway or on the front, in the front of the house at all.
Well, this is residential.
Yeah, I do have residential lighting as far as spotlighting that comes on when there's movement outside, and I'm open from six AM to six PM.
Yeah, I think as a planning commission, I think the the thing we're looking at is the use being appropriate, looking at health, safety, and welfare for, you know, people traveling in and out. We're talking about a low number of parent drop-off, so this isn't a high-traffic stacking zone. I think a suggestion of a circle drive would be a recommendation from the commission personally, just to allow safer, you know, entering and exiting for the the families that are dropping off, so they're not forced to back out in the street. However, this is a reuse of an existing residence and existing driveway, so I, you know, I think you checked all the boxes of being appropriate for what it is being converted to. I don't think there needs to be commercial streetlights that blind the neighbors and be a nuisance to the folks that live around it to have a lot of tall sight lighting, so I I sort of, I think that we've got enough information here to.
I agree with you that. I agree, I agree with you on that, on the commercial lighting and that sort of thing, but I just didn't see any, I maybe some landscape lighting or something just to, you know, and if she's got spotlights or whatever, you know, I under, I I totally agree with that, no, on the commercial lighting, no.
Yes, I have garden solar lights that are put, being put in all the way around the the drive area. Plus, I have the the lights, porch lights, et cetera, that come on with movement. I am surrounded by multi apartment complexes. They're lighting, there's a lot of lighting here, actually, in the evening time that that I have noticed personally.
Ask a quick question, Commissioner. What the, does DHS, when they increase the number, and maybe Ms. Tina, you can answer this, when they increase the number for allowable kids in your house and things of that nature, do they also increase requirements on you of what you have to do or have? Or do they discuss any of that stuff with you?
Yes, sir, they do. Everything is run through, depending on how many children you you take in as a square footage, health department, fire department, guidance. I've had the, I've had the fire department out. They loved what they saw. Everything was was good there. I talked with the health department, and he said I was good for nine, if I wanted to go over nine, which, like I said, I I plan not to do. I would have to convert my three-portional sink, but other than that, I would be able to. But like you, I'm also concerned for my kids and my parents and 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 the neighborhood, and I know what my limitations are and what would work for this house also. Because myself, I do have to carry extra insurance and everything, too, and and I don't, I don't want to put anybody else in a safe, unsafe situation either. I believe I do have the perfect location, and I believe my driving and lighting and the way I run my business would be perfect for for the nine or less. And I, like I said, I'm lost up for nine, and most times, I don't even have the nine, so. But when I do, generally, I have, like, I have two now. They're sisters, and I have two. They're coming. It's a brother and sister. And I do, I do limit drop-off times, and they are to let me know when they're coming in, and and if if anything, if there's one there, they can circle around and come back, but it's it's a less than, you know, two-minute drop-off. They, they are required to sign their child in at the door with their mask on, and then they must leave. There's a, it's an, it's not like they're all gonna start pulling in and and staying, you know, staying in the house with their kids, you know, while while we start our our business.
Okay. Ms. Tina, thank you. I'm gonna ask the commissioners to go ahead and give me a a vote
Okay.
for approval for this special use permit. And open it up to you, the commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to give that a, uh, motion for approval, but, uh, with a stipulation that, uh, she does put in a circle driveway and lighting and preferably sidewalk and, and crosswalk in there. Maybe the city, city can help with the crosswalk across there for kids. Yeah, let's keep the kids out of the streets if we can.
Okay, I'm not going to have any kids in the street. I, they come in and I don't even transport.
But are they coming from Northside School?
No, if they, if they come, it's by a parent drop-off. It would be by a parent drop-off.
That, that's good to hear, yeah. But if they're walking down there, I'm, I'm concerned about that.
Right. No, I would be concerned of that also, um, considering, uh, like you said, no, no crosswalk. I, I would, I would not have that myself. Um, I got into this not only, uh, to make money, but because I care about kids and I love to teach. So I want to make sure they're safe also. That's why I don't transport either. When they're here, they know they're here.
Good, thank you.
Commissioner, you want to amend your?
And I will amend that. Yes, sir. Yeah, but I'd still like to have the circle driveway in there if possible.
Oh, I would like to have, I added, um, nine children or less. I'll second it with nine children or less.
Yes.
Okay, I have.
Rather than the sixteen.
I have a motion and a second for, uh, for approval of the special use permit with a recommendation of a circle drive and nine children or less. All in favor, roll call, please.
Carl.
Yes.
Burr.
Yes.
Is that Prater?
Prater, yes.
Yes, yes.
Mally.
All right, yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. All right, Ms. Tina, uh, special use permit is approved. So thank you. Appreciate your time.
Yes, sir, thank you. And, and who would I speak to, uh, you know, do I know exactly where I need to put, um, the concrete to come to a circle?
Uh, you could probably follow up with, uh, Ms. Laura.
Okay, okay. So I want to make sure I'm doing it all correctly the first time, so.
We appreciate it.
I appreciate you all. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, guys, uh, last item on the agenda. I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing at eight-fourteen. Uh, now we're going to new business. Item A. Uh, Kevin?
Uh, yes, sir. Um, so this property, um, is a sizable tract of land, roughly eighteen-point-eight-three lake acres. It's just east of the Wellington Place Terminus. Uh, it's north of the Greystone Golf Course. Right now, um, Cessar has J and S Park Investment Company, LLC as the owner. Um, we've had some comments about the plat and listing the, the current property owner versus those that, that may be, um, created, uh, through closing documents and the applicant qualify that. Um, but it is going to be, um, platted off, uh, for proposed residential subdivision, forty-one lots in total, according to the preliminary plat. So the, the review before you is a preliminary plat. You can see in your vicinity graphic, uh, where the site is in relation to the city of Cabot. It's immediately adjacent to the city's boundary, a portion of this property to the north that is actually technically unincorporated, Lenox County. Um, and then, you know, adjacent to it, off to its west, uh, is city property. Uh, and you can see that on your exhibits. You can also see some of the preliminary plat exhibits. There's the vicinity graphic, your adopted zoning and your land use. The zoning and the land use are separate graphics now. Uh, it is R-one zone and the adopted land use is single-family residential, so there's no conflicts with respect to any of the, uh, long-range plans running the zoning. Right now, you have a pretty lengthy list in the back of your report um, of items that are either addressed, partially addressed or not addressed. Um, you can see in your packet that there are quite a few items, um, that are listed there. Um, and the red ones are the ones that the staff needed to have a discussion tonight. Uh, in particular, the sidewalk, uh, comment on number ten. Um, and it's related, uh, to item number eleven as well, so ten and eleven have to deal with sidewalks. And if you go down your list, um, item number twenty-seven is another outstanding item. Uh, this is in regards to a, a concrete swale, um, that is shown between lots twenty-four and twenty-five on the far east-southeast side of the preliminary plat, uh, and how it is discharging. Uh, so these were comments that came through, um, technical review, um, and, um, most of these, uh, comments are either from myself, uh, Laura, and also the engineering on call, Mr. Brian Vines. Um, so I won't go through each one of these out one by one, but if there are any, uh, questions that the commission has, um, I think a lot of our outstanding items could probably get addressed, uh, by your E O C, Mr. Vines, and I do believe he is on the call tonight.
All right, Mr. Lemmons? Did you catch all that?
Sure. Earlier today, uh, first, my name is Tim Lemmons of Lemmons Engineering. I have with me tonight also Mr. Rodney Wacker. He was one of the owners of this development as well. And leading pretty much my conversation earlier today with Ms. Nobles, the two main outstanding issues are especially about the sidewalks and, uh, the concrete swale going to the pond. I'm glad Mr. Wacker is here because we haven't had a chance to talk about those two items since I talked to Ms. Nobles today. But Rodney, step up there. I'm going to show you right quick. I have a concrete swale coming out of the coal section between lots twenty-four and twenty-five are plants. They're wanting us to extend that concrete swell all down closer to the lake. Keep having erosion issue, um, that's, that's a recommendation that they're making. Do you have an issue with that? Mr. Wacker said he does not, so avoid bringing that swell all the way down to the lake or to the edge of the lake to a reasonably close distance. Uh, the other issue pertaining to the sidewalks, um, of course, there are no sidewalks of Wellington Phase One, uh, what was called Wellington Place. This is actually not a continuation of the Wellington deal. These could be a little bit different houses that were in Wellington. But, uh, trying to find a way to put the sidewalk in, uh, we did. Another item, too, is. We did want the crosswalk anywhere closer because I know how they did track A, it was really not really the park was developed from a building's standpoint. But we wanted to get the crosswalk a little bit further away from that hump sack for a scientist's standpoint. We didn't want somebody coming around this little curve and it hanging, you know, there's a crosswalk in the middle of it. And there probably is going to be some vegetation in these little hump sacks. We wanted that vegetation field, not blocking people walking as well. So that's why we started the sidewalk, uh, at the corner of block forty-one, going across to the common line between lots two and three. I'd be glad to.
Yeah.
Louder.
Could y'all hear that?
Barely.
Barely.
I have never been told that I was not loud about. This is unusual.
Okay, he was explaining the reason for, uh, having the sidewalk there at, uh, between seven, seventy A, little track A, and then over there by lot two. That's where the, the crosswalk and the sidewalk begins because there's no sidewalk in Wellington to the west. Was that pretty much the Cliff Notes? Any, any other questions from the commissioners?
That sidewalk will, will be included in this subdivision, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Chad, I would like to make a comment if you don't mind.
Sure, absolutely.
I mean, I couldn't understand what, uh, Mr. Lemmons is saying, but per our conversation that him and I had this morning, according to the U D C on sidewalks, you do have to extend the sidewalks to the extent of the property lines. And I am aware that Phase One does not have any sidewalks, but from my conversation with Mr. Lemmons this morning, and I don't know from what he had said, if, if this is incorrect from what he said, that he is, that they will extend the sidewalks to the west property line and to the north property line along the Step Street.
You willing to extend it to the west, to the adjacent?
And that is what the planning commission says we have to do. We will do that. It's just, like I was telling.
Dead end, yeah.
They, that, uh, if that is the only way we can get it approved, we have no choice, but we are creating somewhat of a possible issue here from the scientist's standpoint. If people stand on the sidewalks, that's fine, but, you know, that, that's your call. If you said we have to have it on lots one and two, Mr. Wacker said you'll put it down there.
The planning commission doesn't have the authority to deny any sidewalks. The city council will be the one that would have to approve that.
City council?
We'll have the sidewalks in front of lots one and two that go nowhere, but we'll do it.
You know, why don't you just turn them down to the street so you can, like, ramp on the street and, I mean, that, that'd be the, you know, at least it looks like it makes sense. Okay, uh, what else, Laura? Is anything else on the?
No, I think everything else Mr. Lemmons and I talked about is easy to, to add, to address yet.
All right. Uh, commissioners, you have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, one more thing.
One more thing from Mr. Lemmons here, hang on.
Actually, you know, the, these gentlemen have close to this property. They are now the owners of this property, Kevin Brock.
Congratulations.
So just want to put that, it is no longer the previous owner.
Okay. Did you hear that, Laura? It's changed ownership.
Okay.
All right, commissioners, uh, any other questions? If not, um, I think this is a great, uh, preliminary plat, great addition to the city. Uh, I don't know how you resolve the county slash city, you know, overlap there, but it's your backyard to be in the county and your front yard's in the city.
Actually, this entire piece is across the city.
Oh, is? I thought there was some overlap that went out.
Not all of it is. The property to the north and to the east, uh, if you look at our preliminary plat, this is future development or J L B, unrecorded county, that part is in the county. But everything in back in the screen, which is west of that, everything south of that, which is our property, is in the city.
Okay, gotcha. All right, commissioners, any questions? If not, entertain a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve.
From Mally, do I have a second?
Second.
Looking from Byrd, uh, roll call, please.
Carl.
Yes.
Burr.
Yes.
Prater.
Yeah.
Mally.
Yes.
Yon.
Yes. All right, preliminary plat is approved. Thank you, guys. Thanks for your patience. All right. Uh, any community input, uh, any, uh, Roger, any chats or texts or anything? No feedback? Anybody online that, uh, would like to provide some input? It's welcome. All right, seeing none. Uh, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. All right, thank you, guys. I'll see you next month. Appreciate your time.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.